Nominate now, you want us to do it now?
Yeah, is that correct, nominate now?
Yes.
I would like to put in suggestion. Mister Lester Fikes for president.
Accept.
Support.
Any discussion?
Uh, do we know him?
Probably too well.
Too well.
Any other discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor? You said he accepted. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That'd be recorded, six to zip.
Being that I am, you duly elected me as president, I'll take it from Mister Keys at this point. Uh, I'm gonna nominate, uh, Miss Roberts for vice president.
I accept.
Any, any more nominations? If there's no more nominations, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Miss Roberts, you are our new vice president. As secretary. Can I get somebody to nominate somebody for secretary?
I'd nominate, uh, Miss Johnson. I'd nominate, um...
Miss, miss, oh, Miss Roberts, hold a second. Miss Johnson? It's, it's signing papers and it's, it's, you're at the meetings, so you're able to do the job. It's not something that you have to take notes for or anything like that, so... I appreciate if you would take the nomination from Miss Roberts.
I accept.
Any further nominations? There be none, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Miss Johnson.
You're so welcome.
You are in line for the presidency, if something actually goes down. Yeah, well, when it, if it goes that way, I'm just letting you know that you are part of it. Uh, any further nominations for treasurer? I'll nominate Mister Walker for treasurer then. Oh, okay, excuse me.
I was gonna, I'm, I nominate Miss Cynthia Turner for treasurer. Kim Turner, I'm sorry.
Is it Kim?
Kim, it's Kim. I've been calling her the wrong name forever. Sorry, sorry, Miss Kim Turner.
Miss Turner, do you accept the nomination?
I do not.
Uh, Miss Turner, I'm gonna talk to you just like I talked to Miss Johnson. You, you have to, you have to be a part of this board sooner or later, and I assume that you understand that the facility... I'm just, I'm just trying to say, the job does not entail anything except that you be here.
Until it goes bad, I'm not, uh, interested in being the treasurer.
I'll nominate, Miss Robert, Miss, Miss Tyra for treasurer.
No, I don't wanna be secondary.
Hmm?
If I wasn't first, I don't wanna be second.
Well, there's, there's nobody else. We have to fill the position.
No, thank you.
Well, I would have, I didn't know you wanted the whole position.
Can't we nominate people who are not here?
I'll nominate Mister Walker for treasurer.
Alright, accept.
Are there any further work nominations? There be none, all those in favor, Mister Walker for treasurer, raise your hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The four positions are filled, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. Appoint or reconfirm the liaison officer and alternate, liaison person and alternate to the G C A S C M executive board, which is every Thursday, third Thursday. I volunteer for the job, but if anybody else wants it, I will gladly give it to them. I think you're good.
I'll take it.
You'll take it?
Yes.
It's every Thursday, a third. Third, third, every third Thursday.
Every third Thursday?
Hmm. I'll, I'll, I'll become her alternate.
Okay.
Uh, those in favor? Raise your hand, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Miss Roberts, you are nominated G C E, I mean, C A S C M executive board, which is out there on Maple Road off of Torrey.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve as liaison officer and as alternate, and liaison off, liaison person, Miss Deborah Roberts and alternate Lester Fikes to the Genesee County Association of School Board.
Su- support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The record show, pass six. Approval of consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda that includes the meeting agenda and meeting minutes.
Support. Any discussion? These are the meeting minutes that we had, the first meeting we had in December, and the agenda as you see is presented, so... There be no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The record show, six, nothing. Public comics on action items, any public comics on action items once? Any public comics on action items twice? Any public item, action items three times? Move on to the meeting schedule. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the meeting schedule as presented.
Support.
Moved by Miss Johnson, supported by Miss Tyra. Any discussion? The meeting schedule is on page three, if I'm not mistaken.
Five.
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 Five. Five. There be no discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? There'd be none, the motion carried six to nothing, there is no meeting scheduled for July the third, if you noticed that. That's the day before Memorial Day, and that's only, uh, there is two meetings in July, but that's not one of them. No, excuse me. There are two meetings in July, but that was not scheduled, that's what I'm trying to say. So there's only gonna be one meeting in July, unless something comes up with our superintendent.
Let's see, we got a meeting on Juneteenth, huh?
Yeah.
So, that being said, okay, let's move on to new hire, paraprof- pardon me?
Yeah.
Juneteenth is Wednesday, so...
July third, I mean, the fourth, I know we need to earn a Juneteenth, I'm sorry.
Are we, does the school recognize that day or not?
The school's out.
Yeah.
School will be out anyway, right?
It's a federal holiday.
It is, yeah, so I, I make a motion, uh, that we reschedule that on another date, if we can.
Well, we make it to, uh, uh...
I know it's a little down the road, but...
You wanna make it June the twelfth for the next meeting, or just wanna cancel a meeting?
We can cancel it all together, we can cancel it for July third, for the fourth, right?
We, we canceled July third, 'cause there's no meeting, you wanna make a meeting on...
We can go a week later, can't we? We can go a week later on the twenty sixth.
June twenty seventh. On the sixth.
Twenty sixth, so a week, a week from now.
Oh, okay, yes, that'll work.
That cool?
Yeah, because there's no meeting on July, the first week of July, so that, that will actually cover some of the stuff that we might have three weeks and then three weeks for the next meeting. So, that being said, the meeting's been proposed to move to June the twenty sixth. Any discussion on that? There's no discussion on that? All those in favor, as the agenda as presented, June twenty sixth. Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That the record showed that the schedule has been amended to, from June the nineteenth to June the twenty sixth, with no meeting scheduled for July the third. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mister Walker.
Oh my god.
Don't be talking to the mic like that. Okay, um... New hire, paraprofessional, I think it's on the read motion.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations and approve to hire Tori Robinson as paraprofessional, warrant for Hamady Middle High, middle slash high special education.
Support.
Moved by Miss Johnson, supported by Miss Tyra. Any discussion, Mister Keys?
No doubt, no doubt, Tori is one of our, uh, security aides, she wants to move to paraprofessional. She has a great relationship with our students, so it'd be a, a, a great help for him to be in the classroom with our young people, and I believe he's going to the special ed area, so that'd be even better. So, he has a great relationship, once again, uh, works with the young people very well, along with our administration. So we'll miss him at security definitely, but he's still in the building, which is a plus.
There's only one question I'd like to ask. Are there any educational requirements for that job, per se, or has he took all the requirements needed?
He does have the requirements needed for paraprofessional one.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? There be none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? There's no carry, six, nothing. Approval of transfer.
I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of Mister Cook from his current assignment at Hamady High School to adult education teacher effective July twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
January, excuse me, is it?
Should be twenty-four.
Yes, it, she said, did you say July, or did you say January?
I thought I said January, twenty-ninth.
Okay. Twenty, should be twenty twenty-four now.
Oh, it said twenty twenty-three here. Twenty twenty-four.
Any discussion?
This is, he recommended, uh, requested this himself? Okay, alright, yeah.
Here's more discussion. That being said, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The record showed, the motion carried, six, nothing. Approval of superintendent evaluation.
I move that the Board of Education approve the results of the superintendent's evaluation completed on December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Support. Moved by Miss Tyra, supported by Mister Walker. Any discussion? Did we, um... Did we, uh... For those who want to see it, it's right here, okay?
I would like to see it.
We'll take a five-minute recess for them to look at that.
Basketball game today?
Yeah, I think it's the JV or something.
Oh, okay.
Who they playing, Mister P?
One of those teams, got a real good team though. Heritage. Yeah.
I think we played them, I think we played...
Uh, Grand Blanc?
Grand Blanc.
Yeah.
Was like a tournament or...
Okay. So we lost to Carmen by one point?
Yeah, yeah. Real close game, so we lost, we lost to, uh, um, Warren Davis out early in the year by one point, you know, real close game. And then we lost to Carmen, and then we won a game, I know Kobe hit the last second shot against, I wanna say, I think it was some team towards that way.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like five seconds left in the game, we got one, uh, blow to the ground, right behind the arc, bam.
Oh, wow. So they are competitive then.
Yeah.
Even sir? We're gonna, we're, we're gonna five-minute recess.
That's alright. I had a meeting that ran long than I expected, so... Most important thing.
Five-minute recess, looking at the superintendent evaluation, they wanted to see it. Yeah, I'm gonna take your cord off. I'm gonna take your cord off. I need to take mine off. I took mine off and put it right back on, but, yeah.
I get a nest down here, one that thinks for itself.
Yeah. And it does, it's, it's, it does, like, once you walk in, the lights come on, it's just like, it's saying we're missing a program to where we can control it further than what we can.
Just want you to see it. Yeah, well, you know. Sometimes you gotta spend that nickel to get that guy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, they made up their mind yet on, uh... How they doing that three banger half, it's supposed to...
I wanted to see if you wanted to see it.
I'm gonna trust y'all, 'cause I might have to look at the whole thing. You wanna see it?
Remember they, they changed it?
The total. I don't know how they come up to the end, you know, end total, but...
There's a, there's a rule going on, that they're trying to change it, from the three, to four banger, to the three banger. And if they do do that, uh, with the other half of that coin, that's when it was highly qualified for two years.
I wasn't here, that's why I wanted to look at it, I know.
You know, as long as it's coming back highly qualified. Yeah, there's, you know, you know, it's not required to do it, so I was trying to, you know, one less issue that we have to deal with on the board level. One less thing we have to deal with, you know, according to the law. Oh, man, did you see the lying games, that was raggedy. That was terrible. Anybody? Any further discussion on that, at this time?
Oh, if you're done, then you need to come back this way. She said she was okay with it. You sure? Okay.
And it is still available, if you wanna look at it, so, you know, so... There be no more discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That the record shows, so, six to, seven to nothing. Additional items from the superintendent.
No part timers, nobody wants to drive a bus. No retirees, nothing.
What I, what I think he's saying is, since we don't have it guaranteed for them to start in September, to keep driving in September, that they're not gonna come back for just a semester. So for them to give us a bus driver for a semester, we gotta say that we're gonna have them in September also.
But, but is that guaranteed with any of the, I mean, in reality?
Of the other districts, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I guess it's...
Every time school starts?
Right, it's, it's, I guess it's like understood, I guess, that you're gonna have busing, if you have it this year, you're gonna have it next year. And so it'd just be an understanding, but there's, we, we're not sure, so I, I just was like, you know, this is what we're offering, and we have it, but she was like, nobody wants it to, uh, they like driving for us, so they, that was a good thing, but they was like, we just can't stop doing, driving for this place to not be able to drive in the, in the fall.
But I'm saying, out of their list of candidates, they don't have nobody in that list, or how are they choosing the candidates?
I have no, I, I, I can't answer that intelligently. They, they hire, they train, they do all the things for their people. You know, it's, it's through First Student, and we just request and requ- you know, request what we would like to have as a district, so when it comes to part-time, fill-in, all those details, I don't have it, I can give Teresa a call back and ask her, you know, how are you guys vetting your people, and do you have part-time people, and how all that works, but I don't have, I can't answer you that intelligently from what, from what we, our standpoint with a third party.
It's not hard to believe, don't nobody wanna work no more.
I, I don't think it's hard to believe.
That part right there.
And you get to write your own ticket.
Yep.
It's just the nature of the beast.
Well, just make sure that you understand that it's based on the fact that there's only one semester that we're asking for. So if we ask it for eighth semester, this semester, and the start of the school year, then the, the mold'll change. They will have people available, because they're people who want to drive for us, but they wanna, they have a job come September also.
Yeah, and we can't guarantee that, because come September, we gonna prom- we can't promise that.
No one can.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, nobody can.
So it's understandable why they don't wanna lose their job. Yeah. But what about retirees, like, can they go on the outside world at this point? Or does it have to stay inside?
You know, honestly, we haven't, uh, I haven't heard about bus drivers retiring, so they just kinda fade off into the sunset. It's the young people that's getting the new licenses and this and that, and they're like, they just taking the most money that's, you know, being offered, available, we gotta compete against charter schools that, um, basically have these guys drive across the city. We also competing against, uh, your UPS drivers and your FedEx drivers. If you got some type of CDL or driving experience, uh, everybody's looking for drivers, they got independent guys. My, my, my brother-in-law, he, he got some driving experience, and he drives uncle's truck, you know, to deliver packages. So this whole driving thing is big business, and you don't have to take a drug test in some situations, because you're not carrying kids, you're carrying this, you know, so it's just like all these variables that make it very difficult to secure people.
I think you nailed it right there, kids would, would warrant a bigger, uh, kinda caveat, so to speak, 'cause they're, you know, our children are, um, they come with a lot of, you know, a lot of intense, uh, just knowing what's going on with them on those buses, uh, you mess around and leave a kid behind, so there's a lot of more, there's more responsibility when you're carrying kids as opposed to goods and products, like you said.
And it's their fault, so if something happened to a kid, whether it's their fault or not, is your fault.
Yes.
Whether you gotta monitor or not, it's still your fault, and so...
What happened to the drivers that they, um, laid off or whatever that was, uh, with the, were driving previously?
I'm su- I'm sure they're, they got secured in other places.
But you don't know that for sure, are you sure?
I don't, I don't, but they're not available, so if, if they were available, I, I don't know if they would be here or not, but I'm sure they got drivers everywhere, because in our superintendent meetings, we talk about transportation, and we talk about the need for drivers, we talk about the need, uh, we got other school districts, including us, on our regular routes, the drivers we have, if they decide to take a day off, we might not have red bus today, you know, and so that's happened to us a couple of times this year, uh, I know Miss Richards is aware of that, Mister P, uh, we just, uh, they have to combine the buses, uh, red route is not here, so purple bus gotta go and pick up the red kids and their purple kids, and it's just, it's just a shortage across the board for everything and everybody, especially in education.
Just one more thing, I just wanna know that they put their real effort in trying to select a driver, and rather just telling us, oh, well, we don't have that, 'cause we already said we didn't have it back in, uh, September, whenever we, they said already, there'll be a shortage of drivers, so I wanna just know that they put their real efforts into getting the drivers.
We can't, we can't really do nothing about their effort, 'cause they work independent of us, independently of us.
But we are requesting service from them, and they are employed by us. Yeah, but they're still a company that is supplying what the school system needs, and we're not the only school they work with. They have other schools they work with.
Absolutely, and so I would say this, the per- the, the two people that we work with, with is, which is Shamar, and he took over for Ramon, and then we have, I think it's Teresa, Miss Fox, and, uh, I think they're, uh, I think their integrity is intact, and I think they're, you know, um, they're good people, and so I believe what they tell me. I have no reason to believe, uh, that they're, are trying to be dishonest or, uh, less than honest, you know, uh, in their communication to us, so, uh, she was forthright with us, 'cause I was forthright with her, and she told us, this is how it works, this is the deal, so...
If I recall right, you said it was a hundred, and how much for a whole year? For the three buses, a hundred and what?
Seventy-five thousand, oh my goodness.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand for the whole year?
And I requested, I said, I gotta at least have two, so I said, I told her, the bottom line has to be two, so I made that clear from the board.
What I'm trying to say is this, uh, if as such, that we deem necessary to have, uh, two or three buses next September, then that would abbreviate the issue of them not having drivers for us at this time, because of a lack of busing for next September. Because we're gonna install, install the buses for next September, in other words, the buses for next September would be available for the students if, I'm just, let, just let me say it, would be available for the, for the students in next September, then the drivers for this semester will apply for the job, because they know they're gonna have a job in September.
But they gotta take the job offer now, though, don't they?
Well, this is what he's saying, that they're saying they're not taking the job offer now, because we're not...
They're not guaranteed.
Not taking it, yeah.
So it really ain't no guarantee at the end either.
There isn't, because what they're, the people that would like to come back, they're driving for other companies. They're driving for other, other school districts, and, uh, so, you know, my thing is, a bird in the hand beats two in the bush, and so I would, uh, I don't know about them, but if I got it over here, even though I love you over here, I still gonna keep, you know, you know, like I said, a bird in the hand beats two in the bush any day, so...
So if you want to have a bus driver for September, for, for the next semester, then you would have to say that you wanna use them again in September. Whether or not we use them again in September is, is not a qualified issue, what we're saying is that we're going to use them again in September. If it comes to where we can't use them, we just can't use them, but that's not saying that we're not going to try to use them. So in other words, yeah.
That'd be a contract, though?
No, no, there's not, there's no contract there, there's absolutely no contract. Well, it's not unscrupulous if you're trying to make it happen. And, 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 you know, I keep trying to explain to everybody, you know, there's, there's two things going on here. Uh, I had, there's a, there's a, there's a as-needed issue, and I drove a bus before, so I already know that you can't drive a bus under the influence of drugs, and you can't drink after midnight, because if you drink after midnight, the alcohol is still in your system, you have an accident at five o'clock in the morning, you're still fired. All buses, all CDL licenses are ninety-eight percent your fault when an accident happens. So that's, that's neither here nor there, whether or not, who's at fault when an accident happens, the accident is an accident. It's ninety-eight percent who's ever driving, their fault, period. The only way you don't get out of an accident that ain't your fault, the kid run- The only way you don't get out of an accident that ain't your fault, the kid run off behind a car, that you didn't see run across the yard. If you seen him run across the yard and you hit him, he's still at fault. But if you run off behind a car, that's the only way you can get out of it, per se. So, what I'm trying to say is this, we approach this two ways. We could say that we're, we're going to use the buses again in September because of the students, which is sixty percent Flintstones in our school system, or we can incorporate to try to, uh, uh, go with another school district for their supervisor to help supervise the buses over here, and buy or lease our own buses, which have a five-year lease program, that you buy, that you own the bus after five years, and be our own drivers, our own drivers. So, that's something for the, for you to think about. I'm just, I'm just letting you know, there's, there's two different ways of looking at this and going about this. And for those who think that, you know, we, we might be using up all the money, but, uh, when I drove a bus, they told me, don't let students on the bus who didn't have money. Uh, that never happened. You didn't have no money to get on the bus, you got on the bus, you going to school. So that's me, okay? So we can't, we, you know, we don't, we don't sit down and say that we, we can't afford to send this bus to pick up the students if we can, or if we had the money to do it. If we don't have the money to do it, I understand that, but if we had the money to do it, we shouldn't say that, we shouldn't do that. I'm not saying we shouldn't say that, I'm saying we shouldn't do that. So I, I, I understand what Mr. Keys did, he, he, he went through the process of doing what we asked him to do, and it's up to us to whether or not we want to have the bus system again in September for the students. If you do decide to do that, we definitely might finish up this year with no buses, but we definitely have to have some type of position before, I would say, the end of June, if we wanna use that bus system again in September. See what I'm talking about?
We just have to go back to the job board.
Yeah, we, we can go back to it and, and put it in play in September, even if we don't do it for next semester. Okay, I'm just trying to, just trying to give you all the options, okay?
That's all I have for you guys. If there's any more questions, yes, ma'am?
We were gonna look at, um, what was the, the total amount of students that we can have in this building? You were gonna get that for me last meeting, and you said you didn't have it.
Right, the, I think-
Do you have it now?
The, the answer, I think the answer did come out, is that, um, there is, because we can pack students in here, there is no, it, it's like, there's no maximum amount. I'm a fire marshal.
There's gotta be a, a maximum amount, there's a fire hazard, so I know there is a maximum amount.
Right, and I, and we checked, TC checked with the fire marshal, and they didn't have a number. It's like, the whole building as a whole, I know they got a number, like, for the gym, so once we sell out of the, of a basketball game or something, you, you don't, you can't let anybody else in, but the whole building as a whole, because of all the office spaces and things of that nature, I didn't think they, uh, had in there, um, in the makeup, a number per se that says, there's only a thousand people that can fit in this building, and once you get over that, if a kid at Westwood Heights live in the district and it's a thousand and one, you can't let him in, or you gotta get rid of a person. So I think that, that was the answer that came out.
All buildings have a safety code.
I'm sure it had a safety code, but they didn't have a maximum number.
Just cuz they not confined to one room.
Right.
They not, everybody, this, this, a whole build, they not confined to one room, only, I don't know, cuz my brother, I mean, my, my play brother, the firefighter, if you're confined to one room, that's when they give you a capacity number. They're not confined to one room.
Okay.
Like, even with the state, you can only have so many students in a room, you know what I'm saying? So, they not confined to one, like, in the gym, everybody come into the gym, so you're confined.
Okay, so there still should be, uh, a capacity number for this school, regardless if they're confined to one room or not?
It's, it's hard to determine that, because you got classrooms, you got libraries, you got gyms.
Yeah.
So classrooms are filled to the max, then they can go into a library, they can go to gym.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's why they don't have a maximum, because there's too many options to have a max. Now, seating capacity is different. When you're seating people, there's a seating capacity, but there's standing room and classroom seating capacity, but that doesn't mean more people can't be in that classroom. They just can only seat, that's what I'm talking about. Does that make sense to you?
No, because, because what I'm saying is that, even if we had to take this room and turn it into classroom, what is the capacity?
Overall.
Overall, what is the capacity? How many people can we put into this school? You know what I'm saying?
Maybe the fire chief to come out.
They, they, they would have, they would use the hall space, they would use every classroom, they use the bathroom, I, I know what you're saying.
Every bathroom, every whatever, what is the capacity of this building?
And what we have to do, what you have to do is-
It's never done, it's, it's not one.
What, what I suggest that we do then is find out what the square footage of the entire building is.
That's all they would have to do.
With, including bathrooms, hallways and everything, and then put, get that to the fire marshal and say, what would be the capacity of the amount of people when that man smiles square face?
It's not rocket science, you know?
But they not gonna spend the money on, they not gonna-
That's, that's all we wanna ask for that question.
I wanna know.
Do you wanna know how many students we can have as far as teaching, or just how many students can the building hold?
I wanna know how many students can, I wanna, well, eventually, that, that's how I'm gonna look at it. How many bill, how many students can actually be put into this building?
I understand.
And if I know how many, how many student, how many students can actually be put in this building, then that give me an idea of how many students we should actually have in this building.
So you should be, when you're talking about capacity, Ms. Roberts, I mean, you mean everybody though?
I mean everybody, I mean everybody.
Group of personnel, everybody, okay.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
What, what, okay, ma- ma- let me say this.
Can Ms. Turner ask her question, she had her hand up for a while?
I was just gonna, well, we're asking, like, what is the significance of that? And then there's also things in place with the, uh, teachers and things, they only can have so many students per classroom, so there's limits there. So it's always gonna be some kind of limit in number, where you're not gonna overfill the building to a capacity.
Well, you don't know how I think, so let me have that number.
No, I was just asking, what was the significance of the number? What is it, um, is it, is it helping us to do something? What are we needing that number for?
I want that number.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't know how mu- how I think. So, don't ask me what the significance of it.
I'm just trying to understand better for me also. I just said, what was the significance of knowing that? Is that helping us to operate at a better level? What is, why are we doing that number?
Okay, we're going to move on. What Mr. Key is going to do is, we're going to-
Just like when you could understand why, why, um, we need, why the bus drivers don't wanna give up one job for another job that doesn't promise them security.
That's, no, didn't want that, I didn't ask that.
Okay, what we're going to do is, okay, may, may I have, may I have everybody's attention, please?
Yes.
What we're going to do is, we're gonna find out what the square footage of the building is, because the teachers are only required to classroom of, teach up to thirty-five students or something similar to that. After that, it becomes an issue, after you pass thirty-five, but then the classrooms will hold forty to fifty kids per classroom. So that's not teaching forty or fifty kids, that's what the, each classroom will hold. So, the only thing we could go by on Ms. Roberts' issue is the square footage of the building compared to what the fire marshal thinks is a capable position, capable amount of people in that square footage of the building. So the only thing we can do is find out what the square footage of the building is, and then ask the fire marshal, how many people can, maximum amount of people in that amount of square footage? It's the only thing I can see that we can answer that question.
I, cuz I ain't never seen it in the school, like, the, you know how they had the sign, like, capacity, I've never seen that in the school.
Because classrooms can hold up to fifty kids.
It's an elevator, but it's, it's-
The classrooms can hold up to fifty kids, but they don't, they don't teach up to fifty kids. So then you got, there's enough, issue because, you know, something, everybody goes to the hallways.
I, I wouldn't thi- I wouldn't think that they would put twenty thousand kids in this school and think they're gonna be safe if something happened. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
No, no, it wouldn't be that, no, no number that high.
No, when you said, uh, well, they can stand here, they can stand there, I'm just trying to figure out, how many kids can be in this building and be safe? All at one time.
People, kids, everybody.
So, saying, you know, you can stand them here, you can stand them there, I just wanna know how many students can be in this building and be safe?
See, here, and here-
That's all I'm trying to figure out.
I know, but here's, here's also the in, 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 in the, in the story on that, in the story on that is also, how many seats are in the gym? Okay, because the seats in the gym is another part of the capacity, the hallways are part of the capacity, the music room, yes, yes, they are, they're all part of, they're part of the capacity.
That's true, well, maybe we shouldn't say the capacity. I'm just wanna know how many students can be in this building, attending school every day, and be safe? I mean, you don't want fifty, fifty thousand students in this building because it can hold fifty thousand. How many of them can be in this building and be safe? If a fi- if, if a fire breaks out, are they gonna be safe? Do we, are we trying to stuff too many kids in this building and still say it's okay? Are they gonna be safe? That's all I'm, that's all I'm, that's where I'm coming from.
Got you.
So, so that made a lot more sense to me, so I can kinda gauge it. I know last year, we had a little over eight hundred kids in the building, we had no classroom space available, right? So we had nothing available, uh, for, to put kids in, so every room was being used. Now, was every, uh, classroom filled to the capacity where we could put kids in? Uh, probably not, because contractually, we only can allow so many kids in a classroom, but if it go over that contractual, say that every class was over the contractual limit, now you would be squeezing kids, and some classes are smaller or larger than others, so it just depends on the classroom and the size. And then, if we have overflow, right, with students, we might have to make this space a classroom. We actually also explored the auditorium in the back, they have, uh, those chairs back there have desks, and they can, they're broken, um, there's two spaces where the walls come out.
Then when you all have to pull them out into the hallway because we had a fire, or we had a bomb, or whatever we had.
Right.
Is, you know, do you have so many kids in this building where you can't move them out safely?
No, so, so that's, yeah, sure, so.
Like sardine.
Yes, ma'am, so the, the, uh, fire drill, when we drill, each class has a certain door, so we wouldn't have that sardine effect, so, yeah.
That's all I wanna know.
Right, right, so, right, cuz when we was thinking about saying, let's, uh, just do the square footage of the building, I was like, we couldn't get a legitimate number of capacity, because, you know, kids are never going to the boiler room, and we'll never have people in there, and we'll never have people in the janitor's closet with the chemicals and things of that nature, right, so.
Yeah, that's all I wanted.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yes, ma'am.
But like you said, last year, you, you had eight hu- but you, you don't accept kids, right? You don't accept no more if we, if you feel like the classrooms are already filled up.
If we are-
If they not in the Flint, I mean, this school district.
Right, right, so we're a school of choice, so once we reach a certain level, and that's the reason why, uh, one of the things that we do is that we, uh, uh, even now, we're talking to the high school counselor, and she is telling us, okay, you have this many ninth graders, you have this many eleventh graders, you're short on seventh graders, right? You have plenty of eighth graders, so we know how many to take, ebb and flow it, to make sure we re- reach a, I guess, a, a max, but to where we don't accept so many kids, to where we can't even give those kids, uh, a, a grade education, right, so.
That's all I wanna know.
Yep, yep.
How many kids can we educate at one time?
Yep, and it depends on the class, so if we get a, if we, realistically, if we get a, a class of a hundred and twenty-five kids per class, a hundred and twenty-five seventh graders, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth.
And that was helpful to see that, but I just want a big number, all the classes, all the grades, one big number.
Right, so, like-
What is your max?
So, last year, I think, was our max, I mean, we were stuffed with the gills, I mean, we were stuffed with students. It was a little over eight hundred and something students.
So that's all we can take in?
Right, that's all, well, I mean, I don't know if we could take some more, but I, it wouldn't be comfortable, I say that, so it was really, yeah, yep.
It's a comfortable number.
Yeah, how many kids had this year last year?
Right, right.
That's, that's, that's all I wanted, was a comfortable number.
Right, and our, and our secu- with the, with the population we have now is really comfortable for our security staff, I know they're happy with that, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So that means we don't need to stuff nine hundred or nine hundred and fifty kids up in here?
That part.
But if all the old people in the neighborhood sold their houses to young people, we have nine hundred, nine hundred fifty kids.
Well, then we need to find another building, don't we?
Well, so if that happens.
Well, we are looking.
No, so what would happen if that was the case?
Go back to the high school.
So if that was the case, we will look at where those students, um, come from, what grade they are in, because we gotta keep in mind that we do have the middle hi- the middle school is here. Now, if we had to move the middle school out, so that we can have the, uh, cuz we had a influx of ninth and tenth and eleventh, twelfth, eleventh graders, they come in and take them extra two hundred slots, then we'll take the middle school and start putting them down in different spots, right? So we talk about that in our leadership meetings, if we had to move a school, or had to add some grades, what could we do as a district to make sure that we can accommodate our kids in a safe manner? So if we got an extra three hundred kids that live in our district, that has to be here at Westwood Heights, and they're not out of, uh, district kids, how do we take care of that?
Okay, I know that the kids in our district gotta be here, but when we're looking outside and trying to pull more kids in, then we need to look for another building.
Duly noted, that's what I was saying, yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Another option, uh, if we do have an overflow of kids, and I don't know if it's still in open, but I know that it's, it's happened in the past, it's going on a split session.
When you go back over there to Monaco, the high school.
You may start an hour earlier or two hours earlier.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe an AM session, and then there's a PM session.
Right.
So that's an option that I thought you'd notice.
For sure, it's for sure, so we gotta make sure that we just abide by the state, um, law of seat time waiver, just making sure that we have the proper minutes or seconds per day, min- per hour for each student, and they are actually, um, a better, lack for better term, butts in the seat. And so, long as we abide by that, we can kinda do what we need to do to make sure that we get the, uh, the job done. Any more questions for me?
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Key.
Appreciate it.
There are always gonna be more questions, and I, and I, and I suggest strongly that if you have issues or questions that you really want resolved to a point of a conversation, Mr. Keys is always available to talk to you, as such as anyone in the administration office, so that you don't go away feeling like you haven't had a chance to explain, explain your point or your position. I'd also like to, uh, 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 announce that, uh, any two board members can bring anything to the agenda, any two board members. And if you have something that you wanna bring to the agenda, we, we, we go by Roberts' rules till we don't. In other words, Roberts' rules are in effect until they're not, in other words, this is our board, so we go by Roberts' rules till we don't. And as far as I'm concerned, anything you wanna bring to the agenda, you have my blessing with it, you know? If you give me a call, and I'll say, uh, tell Ms. Bridges to put it in there, or do whatever you gotta do, but there's nothing that you can't do that I'm doing. All my job is, on this job is to be orientated of the, of the, uh, of the meetings. There are a couple of committees that I like to form, uh, I can't get people to be officers, but there are a couple of committees that are important. Building the grounds committee is important, cuz we're always doing something with our, with our, our building grounds. Finance is important, cuz we're always spending money, and, uh, policy is important, because our policy is still jacked. Our policy book is still jacked up, we have double identities inside that policy book. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to anybody who wants to be a chairman of a committee, cuz chairman of the committees run the board meetings. When their committee meeting is over with, they bring the stuff to the board to tell what they learned. So, can I get a nomination for a chairman of a, of a committee? There's three that I like to have running. Finance, building the grounds, building the grounds is just making sure that whenever TC or Mr. Key or them have something to say, they bring a board member into it, so the board member talks to the board, not TC. Okay, so that's what building the grounds is. Finance, somebody has to wash your money, that's all, that's all it is, it's, it's not, nothing on you. And policy, we really need to change our, uh, uh, break that policy book down some. We are a good board, you wanna be a great board, you have to change some of the culture. If I'm not mistaken, do we have a black history program?
Usually every year, unless somebody's not available.
No, black history, excuse me then, do we have a black history teacher? I know I didn't say that quite right.
So, if we have a t- if we have a history or social studies teacher, they can teach black history, so, yes. They don't, yeah, you can incorporate black history into the curriculum. So, if you're looking for a black history class, that's different.
Till I get there.
Yeah, that's what you meant.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to facilitate, uh, say it the right way first time, but I'm gonna get to where I wanna go eventually.
So, you're saying, do we have a black history class that's exclusively black history?
That's a credit, that's a elective or a credit that, that, that's, that's allowed for toward graduation?
No. So, that's, that's an elective.
That's, that's right.
That would, that would have to be created as an elective class, if you wanted exclusively, so. Well, I won't talk about as a teacher what I did, but, yes, so if you want exclusively black history, we have to make that an elective class.
So, how will we go about doing that?
Talk with administration, right, so.
That way we'll talk with administration now?
Sure, sure, and then we'll talk with administration, we'll sit down with our, uh, counselor, right? And the teachers who are certified and highly qualified to teach you history. And then, if we have the student pop and the wiggle room to do it, we can create an elective as black history.
So, I'm gonna do a consensus right quick here. Who on the board would like to have a black history class?
I think the world would love it, but, you know, for the students.
So, there is.
Do the students want it, yeah.
Okay.
So, there, there, there goes your walking papers. I'm not, I'm not putting the board directive or nothing, but those are the walking papers of the board.
Okay.
Okay, so I appreciate, you know, whatever you find out, sir.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else at this time?
Yeah, I have one question. Are those the only three committees that's available, or could we create more committees?
You can, you can, you can have more committees, and it, they're, some of them are called ad hoc, and in other words, they're in business as long as the whatever you're talking about is in business. So, what is it that you would like to have a committee on?
I don't know, just brainstorming in my head. Something community, community based. Your parents and children involved. I would like to do something like that.
Well, name your position that you would like to have a committee on.
I'll come back to it with this, but that's just something that I.
Okay, yeah, all right, but, but I don't have a problem doing that, setting that up for, for you to, to be chairman of. And then you pick two people that you want to be on the committee with you, okay? And that's how that works, that's just, like I said. Uh, I really like to have Mr. Roberts be finance chairman.
It just takes a lot of time, and with me working right now, I don't have it.
Can't you just kind of peek at them every now and then?
Huh?
Can't you just peek at the paperwork every now and then?
I, I do peek at it every now and then anyway.
Well, then you can be chairman of the finance committee.
I, I don't have the time right now, Mr. Fikes, and when I do something, I like to do a good job. I don't like to do a half job.
Can I get somebody on the building grounds committee, so we can watch when, when there, there, there's a project or something going on that we can oversee along with Mr. Key, or TC, or Mr. P, or Ms. D? Can I get a chairman of building the grounds? Because if I don't get a chairman, here's what's gonna happen. They're, they're not gonna be able to do any projects with me as president. So, we're gonna have a committee of the whole, starting at five o'clock, because it takes about an hour for you to get everything together before the six o'clock. We're not gonna run it into the six o'clock program, because we can't do that legally. So, we can't just stop and talk.
That's, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're all right, you're all right.
Building the grounds is almost ad hoc, as you, you said before, and that's something that really is based on, on, on an as-needed basis, ain't it?
No, because we're always building something.
We're always building something?
Just like, he's gonna look into how much it costs to set the heat up in here, that's building the grounds.
Cause it's cold.
Cause it's cold. He should, he, they should have you sitting in there when they be ready to buy the program, to find out how much the program costs, and you bring it back to the board, and then we vote to either put it in a play or we don't.
So, while we can't hear from, I mean, I get the chairman part, but if they the experts at it, they can talk to me till I'm blue in the face as a chairman, I don't know what they talking about. So, if they are part of the school district, they can come in here and let us know and bring in the paperwork like they been doing, and we can look at it, and we can vote on it, or we can vote it down or vote it up. I mean, me going in there listening, if I'm the chairman, I'm gonna come back, I don't know what a piece of wood is, I don't know how much it costs, I don't know none of that, so it defeats the purpose.
I'm, I'm gonna say this, because board talks to board. We don't, unless it's public comment. And as board talks to board, that's how we find out what's going on. In other words, when you sit up here and say, but nobody told me about this, that's what you're the chairman of, and you bring it to the board meeting and tell the board what's going on.
Ms. Johnson, you know more, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So, this is why I'm trying to get the committees going, because board talks to board. Board does not talk to the public.
I, I understand that.
Okay, that's, 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 that's why I'm talking about.
You, 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 I learned that last year, that we do not talk to the public. I got that drill through my head, I got that.
If, if, if they have a, 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 a major project, and you as a board member, chairman of the committee can't talk, then you can allow them to talk for you. You see what I'm talking about? You do not have to know all the aspects of it, but they have to tell you that you, what's going on, so.
When you come to the board, everybody say, well, we don't know about it, and you say, well, I know about it. And then you're gonna pass this guy telling you about it right now. That's how it works.
And.
That's how you go from a good board to a bad.
And I wanted to tell her that she knows more than she thinks she does. Yeah, you do, because if they came out to your house and was gonna do something at your house, you're gonna sit there and you're gonna ask them everything that they gonna do to your house. And you're gonna ask them, why are you doing this, why are you doing that? Uh, why can't you do it this way, why can't you do it that way? And that's all you gotta do, is pretend like this school is your house.
Whatever you say, you're chairman.
And ask them all the questions you would ask them if they were working on your house.
I just heard Mr. Walker say, how often do they meet?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Yep, yep, and, um, I mean, if, if something needs to happen, I mean, I'm there for you guys to, to make sure that you're informed about it. Nothing to get built or spent without you guys' knowledge, so, I mean, you'll be in the loop. And then, once again, Mr. Mr. Fikes is correct, if you and myself and TC are doing the planning, and you want TC to talk, you'd be like, uh, I'm the board member that represents, TC, can you present?
I got it, listen to it. I'm for it. Cause he, Mr. Fikes want these committees. You got your chairman for your building ground, they'll be calling me all the time.
Okay, this, this.
And I like men, so, you know.
I'm mad at you, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Can I get Mr. Walker to be personnel, I mean, uh, policy? Well, what, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this about what policy is.
She probably would be better suited to policy than me.
Well, well, you know, what, reason of why I'm, I'm pressing the policy is because we really need to adapt it down a little bit, and we need to learn it as we do that. You know, just one side, one person knowing what policy is, is not the way you should run a board. And we do have re- redundant stuff in there, so there's some things we need to change and, and compact.
I was in the committee, I don't have to chair it.
After make yourself to the chair, chairwoman. I don't, I, I don't, I don't think.
And a lot of policy is, is already set, it's the law, right? So, you don't have to deal with stuff that's already the law.
You, you go through the part that's, that's already, if it's already the law, you don't have to touch that part. We're talking about the part that's redundant and, and, and that's, that's a school, district part, and you can see the difference, you, you can tell the difference on it. It says MCL law, Michigan class law, common law, excuse me, Michigan common law, so and so, and so and so, so you already know you can't touch that.
And we are a part of the Neola, and Neola updates us, so Mr. Wayne Wright, former superintendent of Goodrich, he comes and visits me, uh, Toll, when he was here, and we would go over the new updated Neola policies that are in place, that is the law. So, all that stuff is updated as, as, um, you know, we get the different laws from the state of Michigan and the federal government, so. Um, just the local stuff, like, um, busing or stuff that you guys want. We wanna, uh, up our, up our, uh, graduation credits from twenty-three and a half credits to twenty-four. We wanna change our, our policy, stuff like that, stuff that you locally control.
So, is the person writing the policy, or what are they doing, or is they just signing off on a policy that you created the policy in place?
No, you, you, you are actually looking at it and talking about what you want it to be. You, you, you are a controller of your own policy. You are absolutely the positive last word until the law say you can't do it.
Well, with the help from the superintendent.
Yeah, but he doesn't even have anything to do with that, he, 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 it's with his help, but not his saying, it's your saying. Only thing that you don't control is the law, the only thing you don't control is MCL.
I think the question was, do you write the policy? I don't think we create policy per se.
Yeah, we, we, we write, we can write policy.
You can write it, but you wanna get somebody in there that's knowledgeable, yeah.
Get somebody else and redo it, yeah, I'm not, I'm not putting my, slip my holy job on it, you know?
You write policy on your job?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not putting slip my holy.
We go, yeah, well, it's bigger to me.
Yeah, so that's what it is then, same thing.
That's why I was asking, are you actually writing it out?
No, no, we, we use somebody else, you write what you want, and then they put it in the legalese.
Yeah.
But, okay. And then the book itself.
Building grounds, policy.
And the book, that we were, it's already written, they're just trying to condense the book and take out policies, kinda. We weren't writing any new policies at that point.
Okay. Now, you're chairman of the building grounds.
I, I got me.
You're chairman of the policy, you know, you can pick any two board members, be, when you have a meeting, to show up for you, with you. Any two, yeah, any two, that you want to be with you on a, a meeting. You can't pick three, because then it becomes a, a meeting.
Oh, okay.
But you still have to advertise it, like, and, and say, like, if you only wanna do it once every two months, every three months, that's, that's fine, you know, as long as. Whenever he has an issue of any kind of work that's gonna be done in the building, he should call you.
Call me, Mr. Keys.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, cause that's your, that's your spot for you to be informed, to, to tell the board what's going on. As policy, you pick any two members that you want to sit there, and we already did the, the bylaws, right? We already done with the bylaws. We, we are, we had, I still, I don't know where they at right now, cause my house is in disarray. But, the, the first section of the policy is like zero, 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 you know? And then Mr. Toll had two or three different places, pieces. And if you go through it and you see which one it is, if you do a, a big book, and take the bylaws out the front and put it to the side, and then take each section one at a time, then call meeting. And it, and, and tell the two people that you want, here's what we gonna go over, and here's what we gonna bring back to the board, and that's how.
How often do they?
Well, how early, how often you want, it's on you. You are the chairman of, of that committee. You wanna meet once, once, once a month, you can. You wanna meet once every other month, you can.
And pick any policy to tweak or bring back?
Yep, yep.
That we need to fix or.
Any section, any section.
Any section.
Do whole section, so that, you know, we, we cross it out when we.
Yeah.
Unless it's the law, so once again, you can't change the law, right?
If, if it says MCL on it, you can't touch it, you know? So, that's, that's.
If I have any questions.
Yep, that's.
Next committee.
Okay, so, we'll, 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 we'll let the finance committee stand as, stand along as, as it works, and then we'll see how that, how that comes, if, if it comes to a position of, uh, of, uh, a committee of the whole, then, like I said, we'll, we'll crank the meeting at five o'clock. Five thirty is not enough time to do anything, we, we've already tried that at least once or twice, and all we did was go quarter after six, and that's illegal. Six o'clock, whatever you doing at six o'clock, you supposed to stop and do a board meeting. We have overrun it, and we can't, we can't do that, can't keep that up, cause somebody complaining about it. And we'll just get gigged on it. Gig means we'll get hit with a fine or something stupid. Okay, that being said, uh, what we're gonna do now, we're gonna do what we call, uh, excuse me. With the round table. Ms. Kim, she's gonna go right down the line.
Good evening to you all, and, um, Happy New Year, we're into, uh, twenty twenty-four, and we've had a good discussion and information on tonight, and we'll just continue to press forward here on the Westwood Heights School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Kim, Ms. Johnson.
Hello, everybody, um, high school board members, high administration. I wanna thank everybody, you reached out to me with my, I can't even say my brother's name still, but I can't even say brother without crying, but thanks for the prayers, I appreciate it, and the holidays was tough, but we got through it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Tyra.
Thank you guys for coming out, um, thanks for, um, letting me know what the policy chairman does and so fights. Um, I hope to do my best, that's all I can do. Hope for the rest, and, uh, Happy New Year, everyone, and be blessed.
And Ms. Tyra, I will tell you that if you still, you can be chairman of more than one policy, so if you still come up with the idea of which way you want that other chairmanship to run, just let us know, we'll put you in chairmanship, and then you choose two people to go with you, and then you do what you gotta do on that. Yep, just give me a name for it, you know? Sit there, like I said, we, we call it ad hoc committee, and which means it's in force as long as you're chairman. Ms. Roberts?
I would like, I would like to thank everybody for coming out, and we're gonna have a blessed twenty twenty-four. Uh, thank you, Ms. Richard, for always showing up. Yeah, you're just so dedicated, thank you. And, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Key, for getting us the information that we need. Thank you, mister, mister president. And thank all my board members for being here tonight. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Uh, we'll have the silent man now speak, because he has not made no noise today, which is incredibly interesting. Mr. Klowman.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thank the Lord for allowing us to see this new year. Thank you, administration, Mr. Keys, everyone for coming out. Be safe, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Klowman, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, newly elected Mr. President. Thank you to the newly, uh, elected officers, uh, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Johnson. Happy New Year to everyone, and we're still in our prayers, Ms. Johnson, and, um, the Davis family is in our prayers as well. And thank you, Ms. Richards and Mr. P for showing up. And then it's Mr. Key. We had a good, um, I think we had a good meeting today, there's, I guess, in my opinion, good discourse always includes a little discord, and, and that's okay, you know? So, I think this board is, is, is moving forward in the right way. Congratulations, Mr. Fikes, and good luck on your, uh, presidency, thank you.
I'm gonna clap you out. Good job, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and the fellow board members. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, my hopes and prayers go to the Davis family. We don't know what's promised to us, but we do know that we have to get up every morning and breathe. That being said, I am glad to be come, your board president, and I'm trying to change somewhat of the culture, because we're already good, I wanna be great. And talking with my preacher the other day, or listening to him, he said, before you can be great when you're good, you have to diminish something, you have to leave something behind. So, I'm trying not to leave what we're good at behind, but for us to be great, we have to leave something behind to progress further. And that's what I want this board to do, I want this board to progress into greatness, because we're already good. We have, we have great members, so let's make a great board out of the great members that we have. I appreciate the, 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 the attendance of Ms. D and Mr. P, Ms. B and Mr. K, and all the board members. That being said, have a happy holiday, your prayers for. That being said, have a happy holiday, your prayers for Ms. Johnson, prayers for Ms. Davis, and prayers for all the, all those involved in any kind of issues that might affect them personally, sociably, or publicly. And that being said, being dismissed.
Say amen.
I'm, I, I almost said it, I almost said it.